Called order, the special meeting for the city of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, November 29th, 2022 is now five o'clock. Would the city ministry please call roll?
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olstad.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riepel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Does turn a quorum and number one discussion on 2023 budget. Mr. Murphy, Ms. Anderson.
Okay, I guess I can start here for a second. What you have before you tonight is kind of in continuation on from what we spoke about at the last work session. We're proposing a, the 12% levy increase over 2022. So with that, excuse me, okay, with that, we would be looking at a dipping into the fund balance of about just over $30,000. And that would get us to a balanced budget, a zero difference between revenues and expenditures. And we do have the updated budget impact or what the impact would be for, for different types of homes and commercial property. So I guess with that, Carla, I will turn that over to you. So you can talk a little bit about the impact and how that works now that we have that, that information.
Okay, so thank you. We have a tax rate comparison. What we've done is we've taken four homes within a certain dollar range. And we've been following them now for quite a few years, just so we can kind of see how levies have affected the tax increase for our residents. And under home one, if you go across the top of it, it says what the levy amount was. When the truth in taxation reports are, tax proposal actually are called when they come in the mail, at 19% for home one, the proposal was $1,487.75. So what we've done is that we've taken that amount according to 19%. And then we adjusted it to estimate what it would be at 12%. At 12%, it'd be $1,391.26. So that would be an increase of 13.49%. If you look at the line right above that highlighted in yellow, that tax market value of that home went up $17,700 when they went into the valuation and trying to remember what month they do it, but they send out the tax valuations like in April.
It goes by, goes by what they, they do what's, what they estimate the value on January 1st of each year. So, so that would be that estimated market value for January 1st and then they adjusted the following January.
Thank you. So it went up actually 10.71%. So now if you, so the green is actually the same as percentage as the city taxes. And actually the taxes went up, will go up $165 from 2022 to 2023. So that's a 13.49%. Now, if you look at the next line highlighted in the orange, this is the total taxes on their tax statement. So with the 12% increase, proposed increase for the city, the total tax increase will be $336. So the total tax statement would be 9% on the total property, including state, county, city, school district, and the watershed and other districts. And then we did that for other properties. So home two is within, for home at $222,800. And they had a tax, they had a taxable market value increase of $17,400, which is 8.47%. When we take the proposed to the new proposed at 12%, it's 11.99 and an increase of $183. So the total tax statement for a home in $222,800, the total tax statement is a $346 increase or 7.28%. So if you look at home three and the value of that home is $354,900, the increase in the market value is $25,400 or 7.71%. The increase in city taxes would be 11.43% or $279. And the city total tax statement would be an increase of $514 or 6.69%. So home four with the value of $489,700, the market value increase was $41,200 or 9.19%. The increase in the city taxes at 12% is actually 12.47 and an increase of $415. So the total tax statement would be an increase of $814 or 8.02%. Commercial property at a value of $375,800, there was an increase of $10,600 in market value or 2.9%. Their increase at 12% is actually 13.62 for the city or $242. And the total increase for the tax statement is $169 at 2.89%. And I know the commercial looks pretty funky. That is because there are disparity credits that the state of Minnesota goes, gives out, especially in our area with Minnesota and North Dakota and the border. And so we'll make up those difference in disparity credits that the county, that the state gives us at year end. Questions on that sheet?
If I choose the home whose value did not change, for example, home number two, their increase at 12 would be 11.99. I find that a tight number as compared to our 12, meaning normally there's enough other growth and other properties coming onto the tax rolls that even though we can go to 12 hypothetically, that would have been nine, 10 max. There's usually two or three point spread between what we would levy and what the average homeowner would see because of growth. Do you, do you follow me?
I understand what you're saying.
What happened this year that that's so tight?
And part of it must be is that we didn't have as much growth as we expected. And the growth came from the increase of value in the homes themselves that are already existing is part of it. I know David had talked to the county about it. He could probably answer that.
I can address that a bit, but if you're talking about home number two, they actually, if I, maybe I didn't hear you correctly, but the, that value did increase from, I think you'd be looking from the proposed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, it did go up.
Let's choose one that didn't increase.
We don't have any that did not increase.
Ah, okay.
They all went up. And so I'll, I'll talk in a little bit. So out of curiosity, I contacted the county assessor and went through a few numbers with him as far as where we're at for growth and valuation, those types of things. So the total valuation for the entire city, and this includes all property that's here, even tax exempt property, for 2021 was $735,188,100. In 2022, that went up to $796,56,300 for the valuation of the entire city, all the property within city limits.
And what's that percentage increase?
That percentage increase is nine, for residential, but, um, commercial didn't go up quite as much, but commercial is not as, as I, so the average residential property across the board went up 9.4%. And as you can see, some classes went up higher, some a little bit more, but the average, when you put them all together for residential properties, went up 9.4%. And then we looked at new construction. And this was kind of telling and kind of interesting. So new construction, so new value based on, on construction, not just valuation increase for sales, but for adding on new houses, putting on an addition, those types of things. The total new construction for the entire city was $6,810,000. However, of that, $6,172,000 was residential alone. So there's only a little under 700,000, a little under 700,000 was commercial, industrial, that type of new construction. So the majority, the vast majority of it was residential valuation increase. So of that, so when we're talking here, that there's 6.8 million new dollars of valuation that gets the, that the increase would spread out. It does appear that it's fairly consistent across at least the last couple of years as far as the amount of, of new construction.
Good. Thank you. I was comparing proposed to new proposed when it looked like the value didn't change.
So it's a little less than 1% of new growth is what you would say?
Yes, that's what that calculates out to. Yes, I didn't calculate.
I mean, 6 million on 700 and, or 780, so it's a little less than 80 or 0.8% or something like that, right?
If that's what, I didn't calculate that.
Quick math in my head, rounding.
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Ms. Anderson, the, the orange figures includes school district, county, city, all that stuff rolled into one. So to get, if we just look at home one, so on the orange figure, it's a 9% increase, yet the city's portion was 13.49. The school and the county are probably the bigger ones in there. They must have had an increase of like 5% then to be able to average out.
That's correct.
I guess here's my thought on this. I know we're at 12%. I know that we've talked about in the past, where we wanted to be at five. We all know that's not going to be realistic. We don't want to hamper us looking forward to 2023 at the end where we have to look at labor and the other costs that we have going forward for two, three years with contracts. We don't know what that's going to look like. I don't, I would like to see us go minimal with the reserves, take 2% off and bring this down to 10%. You know, across so that we can look at, maybe it comes up to maybe it's 7% or six and a half, 7%, you know, total for the residents. That way, we're not taking a lot of, out of reserves. We're still going to be at, what is that, 48% now?
Yes.
Down to 46 and we're well within what we need. I think we need to be cognizant of what's looking ahead in the next two, three years. You know, we have many things that we have to talk about, projects, building projects, different projects that we have to do. And then our largest expense is our labor expense. And that's an unknown coming up. So thought process is, okay, we have that coming up for '24, '25, '26. What's, how much is that going to be left for even capital stuff, improvements and anything else? So that's one, another thing we have to look at is it's going to be tight for a couple of years coming out of this and being at a high level for a couple of years when we look at the expense of labor, health insurance. Hopefully, like you said, hopefully we get to breaking workers comp next year or it doesn't go up, you know?
At least as drastically as it has.
So I mean.
Yeah. Good, as you point out, because 2023 is a negotiation year for all four unions.
Yeah.
So 2024 labor costs are unknown and given as the way it looks right now with CPI, it's, we're going to not get anywhere close to what we had this year.
Right. CPI is seven and three quarters right now. I mean, it's just, you just don't know what's going to happen. It might come back down and it's going to be a slow descent. But I think, I do believe that to be going any farther than a 2%, I think we'd be hurting ourselves in the future personally. So.
Mr. Johnson.
Department heads, are we going to have anybody retire in the next couple of year or two? Mr. Stordahl?
Not planning on it, but we'll see how it goes.
There are a couple of, of individuals that are, that are way over 35 years.
I don't know, nobody's, nobody's formally.
Okay. Thank you.
Just through your information, the rural 90 has, did end though in 1989. So a lot of employees did not start service with the city before then. So.
Right.
You know.
They didn't bring them back.
So I, you know, people aren't retiring as early as they used to be because of the health insurance costs themselves.
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Murphy, on the revenue and expense expenditure summary. Capital outlays going down 200,000 from the year before, are we just kicking cans down the road or are those legitimate stuff that we just, year before there were items that we purchased and we weren't planning on purchasing anything? Or to get to these figures, we're saying we're pulling this capital purchase out, we're pulling this capital purchase out, we're pulling that capital purchase out?
Very, Council Member Vedder, very good question. And the answer is generally no. There, we were able, of that roughly 200 some thousand, 91 of it is debt service that we no longer have to, we have to pay. Police department did look at their squad cars and they did make the choice that with the mileage that they had and that they did not need to buy two, two new vehicles next year. So that was moved to one. And I know the fire department as well, they had that one year increase, capital outlay last year in, you know, this year in 2022, that was not necessary for this year either. And public works, some of their equipment is in their, is actually in their line item budget. The 25,000 that was in there last year versus this year was for a man lift. And that was something that they had scheduled to, to buy and they were able to get it this year. So the answer is for the police department, I mean, I guess it's debatable whether it's actually kicking the can down the road or not, but it, we did take a close look at it and did see that we really did not need to have the two squad cars this year. So that was the, the reduction. So between the, the police department, fire department reductions and the public works reductions and the, the debt service, that's what came to that roughly 200 some thousand.
Chief Penlon, you want to address that?
Barring something unforeseen, we essentially, thank you. Barring something unforeseen, we typically buy either one or two squad cars every year. Our mileage this year was, was just fine. We reviewed that. I discussed with our supervisors. They were all comfortable as well that we could move on with just one car this year. We'll review it again next year. We may be coming in for two, so I don't view it as kicking the can down the road. It's just, we kind of alternate. It depends on the year. Some years it's one, some years it's two. This year I'm, I'm comfortable with fact we can buy with one. If you told me we can't have any, that changes the narrative, but, but I'm, I'm comfortable with one at this point.
Carla.
Including that amount is 30,000 body cameras. So everybody knows that.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, Chief, I can remember what you went through, all that work for the ATV and then you canceled out on that. So you're very conscious of what you're doing. Appreciate it.
Mr. Vedder, do you have anything else? Sorry.
I think next year isn't going to be any better than this year. So the longer that we wait to look at staffing levels, the worse it's going to be. 10% is better than 12. I'd like to see it at 8%. Past years, we've always tried to hold it to the CPI. So if we can get it in that 8% range, I'd be more happy than, than a 10%. To get there, I don't know what to do other than staffing levels. And like I say, I don't think next year is going to be any easier to look at them and maybe tougher if we don't do anything this year.
Anybody else have anything this time? Mayor.
I, in a year like this, I am content to bring it down by using reserves into the range of about 10 on the gross levy and hope that any family that did not see an increase in valuation, and I'm sure there are some of those, hopefully in the more affordable home category, that will see it closer to that 7, 8% as an increase year over year. And I do agree that next year, if, if the other indicators don't get better, we will have to make some maybe structural changes that will help us balance our budget. Maybe we start it earlier in the year, trying to project, you know, where we'll come in with our unions and, you know, get our heads around it. But I, I'm comfortable in a, in a really bizarre year with such high inflation, spending down the reserves by that couple percent, getting down around 10, anticipating that the average resident hopefully will see in that 7, 8 range. I'd be on board with that.
Mr. Larson.
Yeah, can we check back on the reserves? If, if we were to follow out the recommendation from President Olsted to knock it from 12 to 10, is that approximately 120,000 that we would?
It actually is 150,000 with a 30,000 on the 12%. So that plus 120, so 150,559.
150,559. They'll be pulled from the reserves to
Right.
cover this.
And, and then that other sheet that I just did, that would bring down the the expenditures compared to the fund balance. So at 12% was 48%, at 10% it would be 46.79%. So basically it'd be down 1 more percent. Yes. So it'd be at about 47.
Mayor.
Carla, did we ever get a, a pretty good total for bottom line of 22 or haven't we gotten at that? Did we about zero that out? Did we decide?
Actually, it's going to be a little higher than that, but it is on this total.
Okay.
So it's part of the total, it's part of that 48% of the 47% that I said.
Sure, yeah. How much did we go up at the end of the year then?
Okay.
Uh, well, we, Nancy and I are working on transit. It's kind of interesting and maybe she can even talk about it, but, so that's going to be a little higher than we expected. We had some years where we didn't get what we expected on grants and then COVID came in and kind of threw up our numbers too. So we're going to have to pay a little extra more than we expected for that.
Okay.
So we're, we're at about what our fund balance will be, we're, I'm guessing right now is about $700,000, not the 457 that we had planned on.
700.
But if I may, if I may, just to correct, the sheet that you gave out tonight with the 12% though, with the estimated end of the year fund balance, that is the current, with the, with the current, with, with what potentially could come up
Correct.
for transit.
Correct.
So it would still be at that 40, what you're saying roughly that 47%?
Yes. So the 6,159, 459 has in the, the reduction of fund balance as, as our best guess today.
Mr. Larson.
Question for Carla. The, the fund balance itself, is there, just so I'm more familiar with it, is that fund balance growing in, in some way each year?
It, it has in the past. You know, with the reduction now in 2022 and in 2023, it will, it will come down because at one time it was up at, almost about 51% is where we were to start with. And now it's coming slowly down, but the state's recommendation is 35 to 50%.
And I, you know, I realize it's our, it's our actions that are chipping away at it. I didn't know if there was other contributing funds that were going into that balance or into that account each year that were bringing it up.
No, the only thing we had a few years back was when we sold the Riverwalk Building, where the mall, that did go, it was owned by the city. So that did go into the general fund. And that was, that did increase the fund balance by, I think we sold it for about $800,000 or more. So.
One more way that that percentage falls is as our budget grows, right? If it's a percentage of expenditure or percentage of tax collected, as the expenditures grow and as the tax collected grow, that number, even if the total balance stays the same, the percentage will drop.
Yes.
Sure.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was trying to figure out where to start with this. I, I agree with a lot of what people have already said. I just want to say it because it gives more, more kind of back to it, but I think whichever route we go, I'm not in favor maybe of using fund balance to just underwrite operational cost. I think if we want to talk about capital investment, doing those type of things, I think it's a good use. We also know that one bad night at the civic center and we could have a $2 million bill pretty quickly, or million dollar bill, you know, of, you know, with our plant going down or something like that. I think we want to make sure that we have that. I can see a small, you know, we already have 30,000 in here right now to spend. I can see going up to 140,000 to get to that 10%. But I really think, I mean, we have to do the hard work of, of, and provide the leadership that it takes to get to that level where this does become structurally balanced. And it can't start when we talk about the balance, the budget, right? Like part of the reason why, and this isn't supposed to be, I told you so, but it's part of the reason why I said like we shouldn't hire a librarian at that rate because that's $80,000 that we've got to account for this year. And I'm not trying to pick on you, but my point is, is that we have to be cognizant of the budget at the beginning of the year, in the middle of the year, at the end of the year, because the changes that we're able to make at the end of the year, just they aren't there. We've already made them, you know? Like Clarence said, like, well, we, we have to go forward and we have to do this. Well, if we're going to do that, we have to do it, right? And I think, I don't know if it would be relevant with this, but to, and you can't really hold councils going forward to a certain policy or whatever, but if there was some sort of budget statement that said, this is the appropriate staffing level, we think, we should, we think there should be 97 FTEs instead of 99. Or like I said, if we identify possible revenue sources going forward, like we've said for a while that we want to sell certain commercial property that we own, well, we got to do that then, you know? I'm of the belief that we need to increase the rents on our, on our park and rec facilities by probably $400,000 annually over the next five years to get to a level where we're at least making a dent into what we're paying. I, I mean, we're getting, we're not getting compensated to the extent that we should for Civic Center, VFW, all those types of things. I'm all for subsidizing it, but our, the rent that we're getting right now is not commensurate for the service that we're providing. So I think if we can commit to those type of things that get us on the path to a more structural, uh, balanced budget, then I'm, I have a little bit easier time. And I think the people of East Grand Forks will have a little bit easier time digesting, you know, this type of thing and digesting that reaching into this, into reserves. But if it's just going to be, whenever the, the tough decision comes up, that we're always just going to say, well, we're just going to spend the money or we're just going to do this. I think we're just going to be back here in 2023 and then 2044 saying, especially 2023, we're going to be saying, we've got a 12% increase just in salaries, you know, in salaries and health insurance coming up. So what are you going to do then? You know, because there's, there's no way to get back out of that. So that's, that's what I think. I think, you know, budgets are value documents. They're, they're a statement of priorities. And I think absent actually making some of these things, these cuts throughout the year, I don't know if we're going to be able to just finesse our way down there. I think there's no easy cuts out there. So that's it. Thank you.
Things are. Anybody else have anything? Mr. Riepel.
Pretty sure what he's saying is we have to give a little pre-warning to all our department heads that next year is going to be no wants, only needs. So if you don't need it, don't bring it forward. We have to find a way to cut things and that's one area. We've been pretty lenient over the past few years of saying, yeah, go ahead. We'll, yeah, we'll do it. It's, it's not in, if it's not in the budget, no, we're not doing it. It's got to be a need.
The direction, I guess I'm, as I stated before, what my proposal is to go down to 10%. Hey, I also said, we do need to look at the next few years of what we're be doing, especially with labor, as Demers reiterated for me. I think Mr. Vedder's point of looking at things over this next year and getting together and having Mr. Murphy get with department heads and discussing that and having a and having Mr. Murphy get with department heads and discussing that and having a good discussion at a work session of what we have at staffing levels, what, why do we have at staffing levels at this level for services, and what services we would lose if we did not have the staff. I think we have to be, need to take a really good look at that and have a good discussion on it. I think it has to start with you, Mr. Murphy, sitting down with the department heads and coming back and saying, this is what we have, and this is what we do for everyone, you know, it's laid out. Other than that, there's no way we're going to be able to take a look at it and go, well, you know, we can talk about it, unless we see it on paper and realize, have a discussion of the staffing levels we do have. I mean, it's, can't just keep talking about, we need maybe to take a really good look at it, you know, and maybe get down to it and say, well, we can't get rid of anybody because these are services that we provide, and that this is going to get cut, the service. I mean, we have to make sure of that also, so. I don't, I'm recommending we do that, 10%. I need everybody else to say what they want to do so we can give directions to Mr. Murphy and Ms. Anderson to move forward. Mr. Larson.
Yeah, I can, I could get behind the the 10%, but just to add to what you're talking about, you know, I want to look at it from a services level, is, you know, these are the services we provide, they're all in this list here, how do we prioritize these and have a real discussion on providing less services? Because it's, to me, it's the operating expenses, it's not the capital reinvestment or the, you know, the the one-time purchases that we need to do, it's the ongoing labor and equipment, operating costs, you know, do we have less police, less fire, do we offer less public works? I'm just throwing things out there, but I think that's the tough conversation that I'd like to start from, from that direction and then work towards, hey, we're going to provide you less, we're going to, this is in an effort to reduce, you know, everyone's tax burden. It can be a really hard conversation, because, you know, if there was anything easy, it would already be gone. So like, the the flesh is off, we're chipping away at the bone. That'll be the theme for 2023.
Mr. Murphy, go first and maybe.
Yeah, just just briefly, I'll I'll address that, and I, I'm more than happy to do that. I've already done some of that to a certain degree, just due to the fact that I've had that request from individual council members throughout the year as well, and I would be more than happy to go through it with you, with any of the council members that maybe want to do it, come in and see me, I'll go through with where we have. I can certainly do that, and I will, what I could do is put together what our staffing levels are for the services that we provide, and then once I do that, I think then after the first of the year sometime, we, what we could do is have one of our strategic planning sessions and go through that. And I guess what I'll, what I'll say is, because when you, when you look at the city of East Grand Forks, the size that we are and the staffing that we have, we are a fair amount higher in full-time equivalents than other cities our size. That being said, there's a reason for that. Our police department is, is, we have a fair amount of more full-time officers than a city our size. However, we also have a significant number of calls more than a city of our size as well, say, an independent city, like, say, like a, like an Appleton or a, or a city that that isn't in close proximity to a larger college town, that they, so the number of calls that we have is a fair amount higher than a city our size. Our parks department, there's several cities our size that really do not have full-time staff, parks department, however, they don't provide what we provide, they don't have youth programs that they're that they're staffing, they don't have hockey programs that they're doing, they're not running these types of of civic centers.
Greenway maintenance.
Greenway maintenance, those types of things. They're, a city our size, it's not uncommon that the Parks and Rec Department, it really operates out of public works. And Reed and I have discussed this in the past, and what ends up happening is, there's usually individual parent groups that try to run this program, the youth programs as best they can, and what parks, what ends up with the Parks Department is, the public works just mows the parks, and that's kind of the level of service that you get. So if if we want to staff, move it back, and we have to talk about how far back do we want to go there, cities, majority of cities our size, do not have full-time firefighters. They have, maybe at best, a full-time chief and paid on call for the rest. You know, I don't know that we could go there either, because then we're going to have to step back, and we're not going to be responding to the call, we're not going to be going to medical calls, and I know that's a, it's a, it's a service that I know is very well-received in the city, you know, that, that our fire department and our police department are there before the ambulance all the time. So I mean, it's, it's a service that we provide, it costs, but it's something that I do know our citizens like, so. So I wanted to say, preview that, that I will certainly do that, and I think we should have a, I'm full-heartedly agree, we should have a strategic planning session after the first year, and we can talk about that, but I just want to preface it by saying, you will see that we are, we have a fair amount more staff than a city our size, but we're also offering a lot more. And I just don't know that we would have the wherewithal or the desire to step that back, but that's something that we would need to discuss.
I'm going to respond to that quick, I'll go to you, Mayor. Knowing the fact that me, us talking about this and us going through this exercise does not mean we're, we're saying, this is what we're doing, or this is going to happen. We need to go through this exercise, though, just take a look at it to make sure that we're doing things the correct way, having the correct staff, the correct services, and have an understanding of what our expectations are from the residents and what we can do going forward. So people listening that are city staff, that's not, don't, we're not pulling names out of a hat, so it's not, we're not doing that, so.
Mayor.
First of all, I'm going to be looking to cut two members of our staff from economic development. Paul Gordy always tells me he has three over there, me, myself, and I. In other words, he's a department of one. But that's kind of an indicator of how we can run lean, and we do run lean in all of our departments, really what is needed from a staffing level to provide the services that people want. And I'm glad we're having this discussion even today, right here publicly, folks are picking it up on YouTube, maybe the media pick up on it, you know, and we're asking the tough questions to our residents. I mean, the wisdom that we need to guide this effort, 10,000 of it, plus or minus, is not in this room right now. It's out there, the people that we serve, it's their money that we're spending, and I, we will need their feedback on, you know, what are your priorities? We have police, we have fire, we have public works, we have our parks, we have our library, senior center, cemetery maintenance, all the different things that we do internally, economic development, building maintenance and all of those things. So please, to our residents, as we contemplate how to spend your money next year, we'd want your feedback on, are we on track? And and are we willing to do the painful thing of a little bit greater increase in the tax levy to keep our services where we have them because we like them the way they are? Or are you saying, boy, it'd sure help if you could trim that back a little more, even if it means dropping the service level in some area or another? So we do request that feedback from our residents to help guide us into the next year for the tough decisions that we will be making on on your behalf. Thanks.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Helms.
I'm kind of more in line with Mr. Vedder on his proposal, and I'd even like to see it a little less, I know that's hard to do. I'm concerned that if we do get too carried away here, it's going to hurt East Grand Forks like you've never seen. Everything else is, cost of everything else going up, you know, Social Security took a 2% increase, and then Medicare takes a 4% increase. You know, people just keep going backwards on everything, and then we want to take and tax them more, and then they want to do almost 75% on sales tax down the road. It's just, it's just, the money's just not there for a lot of people to do this and pay these kind of, these kind of taxes. That's why they're here, because they're hoping that, you know, we keep taxes down, whatever. If we go at the rate, if we do what we're talking about here, I'm afraid that you're not going to see East Grand Forks grow very fast. I don't think, and with the price of lumber and everything else up like it is, if we go, if we go 12, 10%, I think we're, we're, we're going to kill our, our new building, I think it's going to kill it big time. I think you're going to see a problem you've never seen in East Grand Forks going on. I understand there's a lot of things that have to be done, taken care of, but I, I just think that we can't continue taxing the people to death, because that's what we do. It's easy for us, you know, we give our employees, we give all the employees raises. Every year they get a raise, they get a cost of living raise, they get a raise. Well, there's companies out there that employees haven't gotten a raise for five years. So why do we have to, what, what says in the Bible that we have to give our people a raise every year? Why can't we cut that back a little bit? Or if they want a raise, then they can earn that raise, you know, go above and beyond of what they're doing, maybe. You know, show people that they, they deserve it. I'm not saying that they don't do a good job, don't get me wrong about this, but I've seen some, some things going on that, you know, I was, I was taught many years ago by a guy that his saying was, may the job be big or small, do it right or not at all. And that's, I see that going on so much in this world today with everything. I mean, people just don't put the pride into things like they used to do. And so I'm, I'm really worried about what this percentage is going to do to East Grand Forks. It's, I just have a feeling, there's quite a few houses for sale in East Grand Forks right now, I think you're going to see a lot more come up. I hate to put it that way, but that's, that's reality. So I, we got to somehow try and get this down. Like I said, I'd, I'd, I'd be on board with Mr. Vedder, I'd even like to go lower. I know it's, I've been told that that's impossible to do, but again, sitting here talking, there's no reason we can't talk through this somehow and get it, get it down a little bit better instead of, I don't know, tonight is the final decision? Or is it, or is this?
We're getting there.
Tonight is the, is the work session, we have to adopt the, the levy at our next city council meeting.
They aren't close.
That's the deadline, is already?
Well, the deadline is December 28th, but we did talk about doing it on December 6th, when we had the truth in taxation public meeting, so that people, if the public shows up, they have an idea what the rate will be.
Yeah, I was just concerned, because I thought, in the past, it was in the 20s of December.
Which is Tuesday, it's a week from today.
I'm sorry, I, I took it, yeah, that's when we talked about it was having, it was this coming Tuesday.
And the meetings at 6 o'clock.
Yeah, the meetings at 6.
Mayor.
Mr. Helms, we, we're friends and I have a ton of respect for you. The, the observation that you made, I agree with everything you said, and yet that's the rub, that's the conundrum, because on the one hand, you're talking about quality, quality services, quality outcome, do it right, if you're going to do it, do it right. The problem we're going to have if we try to cut, cut, cut too much is, the quality is going to be compromised. And that's what I, I sense the exact same concern among our residents, is you start to cut the quality of their service, and then they're still paying a decent tax level, and now they're doubly frustrated. Whereas if we can keep the service level up to what they're looking for, the quality to do it right the first time, in a painful year like this, where, again, we're, we're in high rates of inflation, the likes of which we haven't seen since the 1970s, the fuel, the, you know, all the stuff that's gone gonzo, I don't have to tell you that, running your buses. And so I, I hope this is a bit of a weird situation of these higher levy increases. By now, you know, I like to see them 3%, 4%, 5%. That makes me happy, because I think that's, in a normal year, that's what our residents are looking for. This is not a normal year. And the one last thing I was going to say is, if, I want everybody to pull out their tax notification that came in the mail in the last week, the number that we're talking about here, if we can drill it down to 10%, it's going to be about half of what you saw on that sheet. It's just a hair over half of what you saw on that sheet. So that the bottom line number will go down, and the, and the city share will go down. Still, it's a big number, we know that. But if we settle in at, at that 10 as a gross increase, and if some folks see 7, 8, it's a good thing, and it'll be about half of what you showed on the sheet from the last week that you would have gotten in the mail.
And if anybody's interested, they can call, and we can estimate that for them. I have gotten a few calls on wondering why the taxes were so high, and I explained to them, and then they, you know, they were okay with it and understood it. One of the gentlemen that called, I actually went through line, line, line with them, and what had happened is, is property went up $50,000. And, you know, that's because your neighbor sold their house for a lot more than what it was taxed at, and that's really what's happening with the property, is that, you know, homes were selling, I don't know, to me outrageously high, but, you know, people were doing it, so what happens is that, you know, the rest of the community, they increase the value of that home, which we like when we sell, we just don't like it when we get taxed, and that's part of the problem we're seeing right now.
And ultimately, that's also a state mandate. If the county doesn't raise these valuations, the state comes in and jacks them up even higher. So we are duty-bound at the county level to track those sales of similar properties and and reflect those values. We don't like it, that's, that's the reality, it's a state mandate to the county, and if the county doesn't do it, the state comes in and raises it even more.
Mr. Johnson.
I'm agreement with Mr. Olsted here on the 10%. That, that would help, and that's what the citizens deserve, and that's why we've all made promises, we're going to try and keep the taxes low and blah, 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 you know, they're, they're used to politicians lying to them, but we're not lying. This is, you know, we're not the only city in, in the state of Minnesota that's, that's going through this. There's 800 and what, 62 towns, cities? So I mean, there's, there's other outfits going through the same thing we are, and I think we should keep a high, just our employees, leave them alone. Don't, don't start picking on those Dale for four years. And, you know, but that's my thoughts on that, and I thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else have any comments this time?
Sounds like Dale wants to be on the Labor Committee.
You're reading my mind.
Have fun.
Anybody else have anything? Do you have anything to add, Mr. Murphy?
No, so I will, it, it sounds like there is some sort of consensus to the, to the 10% in moving to the, the reserves to that amount, so that's what I'll bring forward for adoption. And just to, a couple of points that were made, that, I don't know if this will make anybody feel any better or, or whatever, but in the, the part of the state that we are in, the city's roughly our size in our area, we are in a better situation than they are as far as what our levy increase is going to be set, finalized that, finalized at, so. So we're talking about the selling and moving, and so we, we're doing better than some of our counterparts in our area, so if that's any, any consolation.
Okay. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Move.
By Johnson.
Second.
Second, Mr. Larson. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion is carried, means adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Nice article they had about you today in the paper.
Yes.